Good evening and welcome to the June 24, 2024, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body; that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land use planning projects such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate, or BMR, housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public. And there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. With that, I will call roll. Commissioner Peruzzi. Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Vice Chair Eric is absent. Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
Commissioner Sillen.
Here.
And Commissioner Silverstein.
Present.
I am Chair Schindler; I am also present, so we have six commissioners in chambers, which is a quorum. The next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Mr. Prada, are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Schindler and members of the commission. So staff does have a few announcements to make. So the first one, as the commission is aware, the community development department released the draft environmental impact report for the Parkline Master Plan project located on the SRI campus just across the street here. So that began on Thursday, the 20th, a 45-day comment period on the content and analysis in the EIR. That does end at 5:30 PM on August 5th; that's a Monday. During that time, the planning commission is scheduled at its meeting on July 22 to hold a public hearing on the draft IR to solicit comments from the community as well as the planning commission, and then also hold a study session to provide general feedback and comments and ask questions of the applicant team. And another announcement, the planning commission had previously approved the 1220 Hoover Street Use Permit and Architectural Control Project and recommended to the council approval of the final, or sorry, of the major subdivision associated with the project. That project was appealed; the appeal has now been scheduled officially for the July 9 meeting. So the city council, as July 9 meeting, will review the appeal of the planning commission's approval, as well as the recommendation on the approval of the vesting tentative map. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a follow-up question on the 1220 Hoover appeal. Was there ever, either that I missed or maybe went to city council, clarity on the legal questions around what specifically, in terms of concessions, that we were able to essentially adjudicate in regards to that project? And I know that was something that was potentially ambiguous during our planning meeting, and I'm wondering if there was kind of full clarity on this topic for the city council meeting.
I don't have an update on that this time. Happy to follow up separately. To the extent that it is applicable to the appeal, it would be included in the staff report if necessary.
Do commissioners have any other questions about those announcements or any of their own reports or announcements? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to the next section of our agenda, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, city, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item in the agenda. To learn how to participate, I'm going, and then to start our public comment period, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Begum for an explanation and to begin the public comment period.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Regarding procedures for communicating for those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we kindly ask that you turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. For members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you've finished your comment. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. With that said, I hand it back to you, Chair Schindler.
Thank you, Ms. Begum. At this time, do we have any requests, either in person or on Zoom, for public comment, general public comment?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. At this time, I do not see any hands online and have not received any public comment cards, but we can give it a minute if you'd like.
We'll give it one, couple of seconds.
I can confirm that no public comments have been submitted.
Thank you very much. Then we will go ahead and close a general public comment and move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is the consent calendar. Tonight, there are two items on the consent calendar. Approval of the planning commission meeting minutes for May 20th and June 3rd. Are there any updates?
Yes, thank you. Staff was made aware prior to the meeting that for the attendance for the May 20th meeting, it errantly did not include Commissioner Doe. So if it's amenable to the commission as part of its vote, staff will make that edit after the fact.
Thank you. So for the May 20th meeting, the addition of Chair Doe in the attendance. Any clarifying questions from commissioners? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Begum, could we call for public comment on the consent calendar at this time?
Thanks, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon on Zoom or by pressing star nine if calling in by phone. And if you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. So as of right now, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards.
I'm comfortable closing public comment on the consent calendar at this time. So let's, just before we go forward, I'd like to just ask, do any of my commissioners have a desire to pull any items from the consent calendar? Okay. Then if we have a motion and a second?
I move to approve both consent calendar items, or consent calendar.
We have a first from Commissioner Farrak to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
And I would probably with the modification, the addition of Commissioner Doe to the May 20th.
May 20th, yes.
Okay. Second.
And a second from Commissioner Sun. We shall, I will go ahead and call the vote on this one. So for the approval of the consent calendar, Commissioner Peruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes, and just for the record, second from Commissioner Silverstein.
Oh.
I might have misheard. Commissioner Sillen.
Okay, Commissioner Silverstein, thank you for correcting.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe was a yes. Thank you. Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is six yeses and no nos. All right. With that, we will move on to the public hearing component of our agenda. There are two items in the public hearing section. Item F1 is a public hearing with regard to 256 Marmona Drive. Staff has recommended that this item be continued to a future date. I'm still going to go ahead and read the item and take a public comment on it, but then we will move into a vote to continue this to a future date per staff recommendation. So this is a request for a use permit to add a second story and remodel, remodel an existing non-conforming one-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. The proposal would exceed 50% of the existing floor area and is considered equivalent to a new structure. The proposed work would also exceed 50% of the existing replacement value of the existing non-conforming structure in a 12-month period. And to determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA guidelines, Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. So Ms. Begum, just given that this was publicly noticed, I'd like to give an opportunity for public comment for anyone who may have assumed this was going to be part of our discussion this evening. So could you call for public comment on F1?
Yes. So as of right now, I've not received any comment cards and do not see any hands raised online, but just as a reminder, for those, sorry, for those calling in tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your phone, and if you are in person, you may please hand me a comment card, and I will call your name.
Do we have any hands raised or comment cards?
I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards.
Okay. Thank you. Having given an opportunity, I will close public comment on this one. And at this time, I'd like to see if the commission can put forth a motion to essentially continue this one to a future date. We have a...
I move to continue this item to a future date.
I'll second it. Okay. We have a first and a second. First from Commissioner Farrak, second from Commissioner Peruzzi. So let's go ahead and vote on continuing this one to a future date. All right. Commissioner Peruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
All right. And I am also a yes. That is six yeses, no dissent, and so we will move this to a future date. All right. We will now move on to F2, a public hearing regarding Eight Homewood Place, in which the planning commission will consider a request for a use permit for hazardous materials, specifically diesel fuel, associated with a proposed permanent emergency generator to service an existing commercial building in the C1 Administrative or Professional Restrictive Zoning District, and determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA guidelines, Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Mr. Pruder, are there updates or additions to the staff report?
Thank you, and good evening, Chair Schindler, planning commissioners, members of the public. Excuse me. There are a few updates I'd like to share this evening, following the publication of the staff report. We first received a comment letter, which I have shared with you via email and also in hard copy this evening. There are also copies, hard copies, at the back counter here, the council chambers. And this was one comment we received this afternoon, and it was a comment that involved a few topics, which include the location of the generator, the testing timing, the time of day in which the test would occur for the generator, the duration of generator usage in the event of a power outage or emergency, consideration of batteries as a form of backup power, and also communication. And so that's the first update. And then the second update, I'll be sharing my screen. We have identified an additional detail, courtesy of the applicant, clarifying that there is a desire with this use permit request to have one testing period a year be one hour and a half long. They need, per some federal requirements with respect to the usage and testing of the generator, to do one test per year that's longer than the original request, which would be 30-minute periods once a month. And so I'm going to present now the following proposed language, revising the, slightly revising the language here of the condition, Condition 2A specifically, which involves the testing timing as well as the testing duration. And so it's simply adding the area, the phrase that I've put in red and underlined. So I'll read that aloud quickly. Testing of the generator shall be limited to one 30-minute period per month and one additional two-hour period per year between the daytime hours of 8:30 AM and 5:30 PM on weekdays. And with that update, I am available for any other questions. We have nothing else in terms of updates at this time, but following that, I will introduce the applicant team. There is one representative who will come up and have some opening remarks, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have to start. Thank you.
At this time, do any commissioners have clarifying questions for Mr. Pruder? About, specifically about the update? I think perhaps we shall hold other clarifying questions until after the applicant has had a chance to make opening remarks.
I have one clarifying question about the update. Is it our expectation that tests will be run for that additional two-hour period on top of the ones per month? It says, I mean, the recommended modification says that it will be limited to, but is it the expectation that that would actually occur and that's going to be part of the testing schedule?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Seeing no other clarifying questions for that particular update from Mr. Pruder, I would welcome the applicant to make remarks, as I understand was the plan. Your mic is not on quite yet. Let's be sure we can hear you in the... Testing. There we go. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. I am Deborah Wachs. I am one of the partner physicians and the practice director of Reproductive Science Center. We are so happy to be here tonight, and thank you, commissioners, for inviting us and for hearing us tonight. First, I just wanted to introduce who's here with me. So first is Kathy Wheeler. She's the executive director of our practice. Next is Dr. Sarah Reed. She is also one of the partner physicians of the practice. Then we have JJ Riestra. He's the architect on the project. Then we have Lawrence Jones. He's the electrical engineer. And then last, we have Adam Thompson, who's the acoustical engineer. Then also available remotely, we've got April Hatton, Allison Dar, and Tucker Matthews, who are also available. So just by way of a little bit of background, Reproductive Science Center was founded 41 years ago, and we have been an active fertility practice since that time. We started in the East Bay, and our initial fertility center was based in San Ramon, and we have grown since that time. We've always had a strong desire to be able to provide fertility services on this side of the bay, and finding the right time and the right location has been the critical piece. When we found Eight Homewood, a freestanding building, and based on where we were in terms of our practice growth, we were thrilled to find that location and are very, very excited to be able to expand our fertility services. I am a resident of Menlo Park. I live in the Willows. We are so thrilled at the opportunity to be able to expand here. We did our outreach event in May and were able to set up an event in the afternoon on the weekend, and the feedback from the neighbors was very, very excited to have a fertility center in town, and the overall feeling matched the enthusiasm that we have for the project as well. So thank you for hearing us, and we look forward to our discussion tonight.
Thank you, and welcome. Do we have clarifying questions for staff or for the applicant before we move to public comment? Commissioner Peruzzi.
I have a few questions. First of all, just to frame this for me, and forgive me if this is buried somewhere in the staff report. I read it through a couple of times, but I may have missed it. This specific kind of generator, how common is this in other places in Menlo Park? I know that individuals buy diesel generators for their homes, but for this level, this decibel level, et cetera, what else is out there already?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Peruzzi. I would say that in our recent experience with the planning commission and use permits, generally, we've had a few projects along these lines that involve a commercial-type use requesting, as well as residential uses. We have a few multifamily residential buildings that are similarly sized and scaled in terms of square footage and building type that have requested and received a use permit for one diesel generator, generally along these lines, for backup purposes. The specific nature of the backup energy may vary if it's residential for residents living in the building versus a use like this, which is more based on the functions of the commercial use specifically. But there have been, in my recollection, I have had at least three in the last four years or so that have gone to the planning commission and received approval.
So that's helpful. So then, when they've actually been installed, have we had issues with the testing? Has the decibel level been about what we would have expected it to be? What's happened after those were approved?
Sure. I may follow up with a few questions on that note, but to start with, I think the main points to take away would be that we've had approvals. This type of project would follow up with a building permit application, and then through that process, receive that level of inspection and approval from the building division, as well as other reviewers. And I would also add that the other issue concerning noise and activity and safety is obviously regulated through a variety of means. This type of use would require hazardous materials permitting through hazardous materials business plan with the San Mateo County Environmental Health Services Division. And in addition to that, you know, in terms of any complaints or issues with code enforcement, I'm not aware of anything that's happened with these different types of generators onsite.
Okay, thanks. So shifting gears for a minute, I wanted to ask about parking requirements. So was the parking requirement based on the usage, is it a medical clinic-related parking requirement, or is it sort of a more generic, commercial, business parking requirement? And then I was going to get a little specific about this particular kind of clinic, wondering if the parking needs might be different than your average medical facility.
Thank you. The C1 zoning district for which this property is located has one flat parking rate, so regardless of the actual use onsite, the same rate would have been.
Okay. Maybe the applicant has insight into what you would anticipate the parking usage would be. I think, you know, it seems like one of the issues hinges on the city requirement for X number of parking spaces, and I'm really curious about whether or not we actually think those are all going to be required at the same time.
So the way our general operations work is we do procedures in the mornings and ultrasound monitoring in the mornings, and then starting at around 10:00 AM until about 4 o'clock, we have patients coming in for new patient appointments and follow-up appointments. I believe we have 107 spots, parking spots.
That's great.
Yeah, so that is very, very ample for the needs of our clinic. We generally have two doctors working at once, seeing, you know, seven to 10 patients a day, and then the morning monitoring is when more of the, more spots would be used when patients are coming in for procedures or monitoring.
Okay, so it sounds like five parking spaces, give or take, probably wasn't going to break the mold here.
So you're saying giving up those?
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering, as we start to talk about the trade-offs associated with this, because of course, it's always about trade-offs, I'm wondering just how essential those spots are, you know, some kinds of, in other cases, we would have had maybe like a use study or a casual observation of parking occupancy beforehand, but you're new, so we don't have a track record, so I'm just curious, based on your experience with other places.
Yes, I don't think we're worried that we are going to run out of...
Thank you, that's so helpful.
Yes.
Do other commissioners have clarifying questions? Okay. I have two quick, oh, sorry, two quick ones, Mr. Pruder, and then we'll go to Commissioner Sillen. One is about noise analysis. One is about the total hours capacity of the backup generator. And then I guess, I had a question about parking spaces, very similar to what Commissioner Peruzzi asked, and I may just ask one clarifying on top of that. So on the noise analysis, the scenario where both the generator and the air handling unit were running was sort of the maximum noise creation that was laid out in the staff report. And I wanted to be sure that I understood the scenarios in which both of those two things would be running. My understanding is that the only time when both of them would be running, both the generator and the air handling unit, is if the generator is being tested during the daytime hours, and so they would both be running for 30 minutes, or once a year, up to two hours. And then the second example, the second use case, when they would both be running, is if there were a power outage, and both the air handling unit and the generator would be running. Are those the only two scenarios? Am I correct? Are those two scenarios when they'd both be running? And are there any more that where both of them would be running?
Thank you for your question. Yes, that would be correct. Those are the two scenarios that would involve both running, and I, yeah, as indicated in the study. Thank you.
Thank you. And then my next question is about, there is in the agency referral forms for the backup generator, it talks about there being a, how much runtime would come from a full tank of diesel. And I believe the form, in one of the agency referral forms, said it would allow the generator to run for 48 hours. And I wanted to see if that was 48 hours running on the limited services that were talked about by the applicant, just the procedure rooms and making sure that embryos could be put into long-term storage. In other words, I think the language I've got here is limited, let's see, select equipment, limited HVAC within the labs, and backup to only selected power circuits and limited HVAC. In other words, it's not the entire building. So is it 48 hours of power in the limited capacity or to the full building?
I'd like to defer to the applicant for this question. My understanding is their usage and intention would be for just the limited effort, but they can confirm. Thank you.
Hi.
So...
So, the 48-hour runtime is a worst-case scenario based on everything operating at full load. So, in the event of an outage, it could last 48 hours before needing to refuel. I'll defer to the physician team as to how long they would actually need in order to get everything into long-term storage.
Okay, so 48 hours of the full electrical draw of the building? Or for the subset of, I'm sorry?
There is no capability to put the entire building on the generator, even if we wanted to.
Okay. So it's 48 hours for the defined capacity that was in the report, just for the generator?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that 48 hours while we still have the applicant available?
Please.
As part of the staff report, it says regarding generator refueling, it says that refueling occurs once per year and the generator uses minimal fuel, approximately 1% of its total capacity during testing. If it's going to be tested for a half hour every month, that would be six hours. If that's 1% of the total fuel, that would imply that it could run for 600 hours. And I'm trying to figure out what the delta is between 600 and 48.
So, what we're required to calculate our runtime based on is if the air handler is running at its full power, which means that it is the hottest day of the year and there is also a power outage. On top of that, every single piece of equipment within the lab is running at its full load. So, we don't know exactly how long the fuel tank capacity would be in a scenario where it's 70 degrees outside, but there's a power outage. But testing occurs usually not at those peak times. So if we were to test in, say, the fall where it's not very hot outside and it's not very cool, then we wouldn't be using much fuel at all. We would really, you can think of it like, this is a diesel engine, just like your car is an engine. You can think of the test in the fall as you're idling at a stoplight, almost. And the test, that hour and a half test that's under full load is like you're going down the road at 60 miles per hour. So, obviously, you use more fuel going down the road at 60 miles per hour and you use a lot less when you're idling. But as far as an exact calculation of, on this day, what runtime could we get, that would involve a lot more in-depth analysis.
Thank you for the additional detail. And just to make the number clear, I believe Commissioner Berusi just asked about the current requirements in C1. So just numerically, what is the required number of parking places under current zoning in C1 for this project currently under city zoning?
It's 106 spaces.
106 spaces under current zoning?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. That was, those were the only clarifying questions I had, but I believe Commissioner Sillen had some clarifying questions.
Yes, thank you. So since we were just talking about it, the, yeah, I guess I'm a little confused about the potential generator runtime. It sounds like, well, at some place in the document, I was reading that the intent of the generator is to kind of keep things going in order to, like, let's say there's an issue with power of any sort. The generator's purpose is to just keep things afloat until everything can be sort of stored and evacuated and so forth. On the other hand, it sounds like it could be run, like if the power, let's say PG&E's power goes out for three, four days, which has happened before, and it is one of these hot days where everything's being used. Even in that case, it could run for 48 hours and then it could be refueled and keep going. So, could perhaps the applicant or staff clarify? Yeah, what is the longest the community should expect this thing to be run? Let's say, yeah, worst case?
So, the intent of the generator is to provide an orderly cessation of operations. The reason it's 40, we selected a 48-hour runtime is because to orderly seize operations can take several hours, if not multiple days. And there is, when the power first goes out, there is an initial assessment of, is this going to be out for 15 minutes or is this going to be out for four days? If we believe the power is going to be out for 15 minutes, then we're not going to start the process of putting everything into long-term storage because, again, that can take several hours and has a lot of potential consequences with it. However, if it is going to be a very long outage, or we expect that, then we would, over the next several hours or potentially the next two days, start putting things in a long-term storage.
So, is there a scenario where, let's say, you know it's going to be three days, PG&E says they'll have it back on in three days, and you just say, we'll just keep it running, the generator running for that period of time? Is there like a maximum number of hours that you're willing to run the generator, I suppose?
So, through the chair, I think we can let the applicant answer this, but we're starting to veer a little bit away from clarifying questions. So if it's, after this answer, staff would recommend that we move into public comment and then bring it back to the dais for this more detailed discussion.
Thank you.
So I think we're all on the same page that we would not want to be on our backup generator for long periods of time, the same way the neighborhood would not want that. So, in a worst-case scenario where we were going to have a longer-term outage, we would be moving as quickly as possible to be off of that backup generator, too. So I think the intent is not that we are using that backup generator to keep us afloat for days on end. It's really to just get us out of whatever emergency situation we're finding ourselves in for patient safety and embryo safety.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beacon, could we please go ahead with public comment now for item F2?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon in Zoom or by pressing star nine if calling in by phone. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. And as of right now, I do not see any hands raised online and have not received any comment cards.
Let's just give it one more moment.
I can confirm that no, no comments have been made, or sorry. I have not received any comment cards and there are no hands raised online.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Beacon. Then I will close public comment on this item and bring the discussion back to the dais ultimately for a motion. A motion that would also need to include Mr. Pruder's modification and with modification to the resolution. And so I invite commissioners to share their thoughts and questions.
Can we, can we address the questions of the one person who emailed us? There were, that were laid out in the letter?
Yes, I think if you would like to pose the questions?
Yes, okay.
Please, on behalf of, and paraphrase on behalf of.
Right. So, one was the question about locating the generator closer to the USGS property line. And it looked like from the report, there were actually two issues with that. One of them was the parking spaces issue, which it sounds like from the applicant's perspective could be a non-issue. There was something about wiring. I wonder if there's, anybody could offer clarity on that?
Hi, I'm JJ Riestra.
Let's be sure your microphone is on. There we go, that's perfect.
So, I think we, we chose that location because it was the most practical and it was less invasive and obtrusive. It was right there, close to the property. If we went out there, we were introducing, one, taking more parking spaces, but also getting close to the trees, the protected heritage trees that are nearby. And also, when talking to our acoustical experts, we found that we can, we can have the same amount of meet the municipal code ordinance in terms of not being louder than what Menlo Park kind of dictates. So that's, that's why we chose that particular spot, location where it's located now.
So, just to follow up on that, do we think that there would be damage to the trees? I mean, is there a place where it could go that's farther from the Kent and Waverly, or Lynnfield, or I can't remember, it is Waverly, homes closer to USGS, but a foot or two farther from the trees? I mean, I guess I'm trying to find the happy medium here. If we've decided, which it sounds like we have, that parking, the parking minimum that we've come up with isn't, shouldn't be a limiting factor, then I'm wondering, you know, how far we can bend to support the concerns of existing residents who probably would otherwise welcome this kind of business in the neighborhood?
So, one other item that is a concern is that we have to route the wiring from the generator to the building. And per the electrical codes, we can only bend that route once. Otherwise, you won't be able to pull your wire through your conduit safely. So, we actually went to the site and I have some photos we could share if we would like. And the, if we were to try and go closer to the USGS property line, we would, one, be excavating very close to where the roots of those heritage trees are. So while we may not be directly underneath the trees, there is a very good chance that in excavating our trench, which, again, by code has to be 24 inches deep and will probably be at least a foot wide, there is a very good chance that we don't have a straight shot that misses all of the roots. So, while we may not be directly next to the trees, we didn't want to risk damaging the roots and possibly killing the trees inadvertently by having it as close as we are. There's also just the issue of the amount of noise it would take. As we are right now, we're very close to the building. And so there's going to be minimal site work. So there's minimal trenching, minimal excavation, and not much asphalt cutting. If we were to move it much farther out, then we would be increasing just the amount of asphalt cutting, the amount of trenching, digging and all of that, just to move it a little farther away.
Thanks, that's helpful. The next question that he had was about the testing timeframe, about the 5 to 5:30 window. And I'm wondering if you can help explain that a little bit? Is there, is there a capacity to move it earlier without it being, okay?
Yeah, we're very, very willing to be flexible on that. He had proposed a noon time testing and there's no problem with that. We generally, in our current East Bay location, we assess the time based on what's going on on the particular day. But his request for it to be midday when kids are in school is very reasonable.
Oh, thank you, that's great. I feel like we covered the other topics in the discussion earlier.
Commissioner Sillen?
Just wanted to make a quick disclosure that today, in responding to the applicant's, or sorry, the commenter's email, just acknowledging that I received the comment, I realized that we had met before a few times in passing playground kids conversation. So I don't think this interaction will bias my judgment of this matter, but just wanted to disclose that.
Thank you.
I still don't have full clarity or understanding on the actual generator capacity requirement. I, you know, I understand that it's stated that a 200-kilowatt generator is required for this backup, at least for the context of my thought process, is thinking about whether or not a battery backup would be sufficient. And so, in my head, I'm thinking, okay, 200 kilowatts times a potential maximum of 48 hours. Is it 9.6 megawatts that is truly needed? Which obviously would be untenable from a battery standpoint, but is that what we're talking about?
Yes. During design, we actually did an analysis of what a battery system would take. And the system would be about the size of a school bus and a half, would weigh about 30,000 pounds and cost $250,000.
Okay, yeah, I'm familiar with battery backups and I know they're expensive. And so as long as that's the scale at which we're talking, then at least it helps me put that in context. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen?
Okay, so just wanted to give my general thoughts on this matter as I was thinking through it. I think, at first, when I was reading the report, it seemed like there was a big report on acoustics and noise and that's certainly a concern. But with this public comment, some of the discussion we're having now, I think there's an additional concern of emissions and, you know, a particular matter going into the air. And the reason this whole permit exists, this permit is required is because diesel is a pollutant. So I think we are trying to balance the interest of a business that provides medical services to the community with the interest of residents who may be subjected to this emissions, pollution, if you will. And I think it's not quite clear from the report to me what is even the pollution level. I know that there was a letter in response to Mr. Herrick, the public commenter, saying that it's similar to the, like, the testing would provide exhaust similar to an 18-wheeler engine, or less than that of an 18-wheeler engine, running for an hour. But in this case, the exhaust would be going up and not moving. It just all seems very vague. And so I guess the ideal solution would be something that creates no emissions that pollute the air for nearby residents. It sounds like, I'm assuming the cost of this solution versus the battery of 250,000 is significantly lower, so I'm assuming that's the reason we're not going with that. And there's also other concerns. But I'm wondering, yeah, are there other, I mean, well, I'll start by asking, have there been alternative fuels considered? Like, I know that natural gas was in the report, but it was dismissed because it's provided by utility. But is it possible to bring it in with like a fuel truck? My understanding is that it's cleaner. Are there any other options that have been used at other facilities for your company besides diesel?
Unfortunately, technology hasn't quite gotten there where diesel is a less viable alternative than anything else. We have considered renewable energies. Unfortunately, solar power, being powered by the sun and the earth blocking the sun at night, just isn't reliable enough, even with battery backup systems. Natural gas, because we are dealing with life safety, natural gas generators have started to be able to start in less than 10 seconds, but they are tougher to find at this scale. So, natural gas is, just the generators tend not to start as fast. And I wouldn't want to be in any kind of medical procedure where the lights go out and they take longer than 10 seconds to start back up. To the question of it being in a tank, you would have the same issues as you do with diesel, unfortunately, where you do have a fossil fuel that's stored in a tank. And there are other concerns with natural gas, just storing that much onsite. And just the volume of natural gas that would be required would require a much larger tank than the equivalent diesel tank.
Thanks. And can you speak, like, for this generator, is, can you speak to the emissions overall? Like, is it, yeah, is it similar to an 18-wheeler? Is there additional, like, filtration that's done to the exhaust? Can there be additional filtration? And is it somehow directed away from the residences up into the sky, like propelled that way? I don't know. I don't know.
We have included every catalytic converter, emission reducer, everything to reduce NOx that we can. So it's, just to put a couple of numbers into context, the engine on an 18-wheeler, they don't officially rate them this way, but it's about 350 kilowatts. This engine is about 200 kilowatts. So the engine is already about 2/3 the size of an 18-wheeler engine. I do understand the concern where your 18-wheeler is traveling down the road and bringing the exhaust with it. But in this case, the exhaust does go up, and because it's of how hot it is, it does go up fairly quickly. So it doesn't take long for it to rise above the plane of the neighbor's roof. So unless you're standing on a 200-foot ladder, you probably wouldn't see any exhaust fumes with where the generator is, at your house, or at the neighbor's house.
Thanks. Yeah, that was something confusing in the response to the Mr. Herrick's email, was that on one hand, it said, like you said, it would just flow up in the air and wouldn't even touch the residences. But on the other hand, it said it would be similar to living in your apartment, would be somewhere for a month, would be similar to like driving on the road for an hour. So I guess, is it, should we pretty much be thinking of it as this exhaust won't reach the apartments nearby because it's going to go up for sure? Or is it like, if it's a cold day, am I wafted in there?
It's not going to reach the apartments. On a cold day, the exhaust would actually rise up a lot faster.
Ah, pardon me. Forgot, high school science. Okay, I'll pause there and let other commissioners comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. I appreciate the, how my fellow commissioners are elevating Mr. Herrick's concerns. I'm just going to quickly share a personal experience. Six years ago, when I first moved to Menlo Park, before I knew about decibel limits or hazardous materials, I didn't even know that diesel generators were bad for you. But across the street, there was an office building doing construction work, and they had a big old generator. And aside from whatever we were breathing in, the noise just traveled through the ground. And my family had to listen to it for two weeks, every day. It was awful. So every time a generator comes before the planning commission, I remember that. And I genuinely feel Mr. Herrick's concerns, I think his are less about noise and more about health for his son and the bedroom window. That said, I appreciate that you are all dealing with something very fragile and delicate, embryos and the future of families. And also, going back to Commissioner Berusy's question, but would you be open to changing the testing time? So, and I wouldn't even want you to go to natural gas. I mean, natural gas is a whole other problem we got to get off of, too. And I know you weren't, you know, a proponent of that. So I just wanted to throw in my voice, this is, you know, no one wants a diesel generator in their backyard. But just for the fact that you're open to adjusting testing time and that this is really just for the safe cessation of operations, not to run the microwave in the mini-fridge, I would just like to indicate that I will support this application. We have, we have approved, this commission has approved use permits for diesel generators for other office buildings where it was not even clear what they were doing. So I just wanted to share my inclination. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. I would like to sort of voice similar feelings to what Commissioner Doe very eloquently said right now, which is appreciation for both the nature of the business and also for the work that has been done, at least to investigate a variety of different options, a variety of different locations, and a variety of different possible power sources. To my, what I can recall of similar application, or similar requests that we've gotten, this one goes into more detail than any we have, we have seen about alternative power sources, be they natural gas, be they solar, and additional locations, and the math behind, and the limitations and the benefits of different locations. So I appreciate the additional detail. I also recall that some of the instances that Commissioner Doe alluded to here, where we've gotten requests for backup generators, one for a financial services company and one for another biotech company. Again, without this level of detail about it being for a cessation of the business practices. And I think in those cases, you know, we asked the right questions forwarding, promoting Menlo Park's objectives of, you know, protecting the climate, looking for alternative power sources. But there are instances where you do have to sort of think about what is applicable for the jobs, the businesses. And in many ways, that benefits the community significantly, too. Like Commissioner Doe, I actually thought noise was my bigger, was a big concern when I started reading through this. So I did read very carefully sort of the additive impact of the two different noise sources. They're still within our city's guidelines. But as a former commissioner has alluded to, even 45 decibels all day and all night can be tough. So I do encourage you to, in addition to the barriers that are already proposed, continue to look for ways to reduce that noise level on a good neighbor basis. That is something that we have, has come up in many projects to this city, that the noise is hard. And Commissioner Doe has experienced it. All right. So with, with those sentiments, I will be supporting this, this resolution when, when we come time to a vote. Commissioner Herrick.
Thank you. I'm so glad I got to go after you, Chair Schindler, because you pretty much voiced everything that was in my mind. Thank you for being so sensitive to the feedback. I know you're, you're promoting health and wellness, too. So I know you're not trying to, you know, do this because it's fun to have the need for a generator. We've all experienced, actually, I just had one this weekend, a pretty substantial power outage for a few hours, and some melty ice maker to prove it. So I know that this is a requirement now, whether we want to have them or not. And I look forward to the day when there's more sustainable fuel sources or some way to reduce all emissions and sound. But for now, I'll certainly be supportive of this application. And I actually, I just wanted to, one additive comment is that while I know it's worthy to discuss where the best place for this to be, it's actually quite close to the business building. They'll have the biggest sound impact, not the neighbors. So I'm not quite sure any other place would, it's going to impact somebody, and it's impacting themselves the most, is I guess my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Herrick. I also appreciate, since you mentioned it, the sensitivity to protecting the trees. And I do think that there is a long-term future possibility that the property next door in the USGS space has significant opportunity to help Menlo Park meet many of its goals for housing, for commercial, for growth. And I am interested in keeping those, that, keep, keeping as open a slate as possible for those future possibilities as well, too. So that crossed my mind when I was thinking about the locations. Commissioner, yes, yes.
Yeah, so when it comes to approving a permit like this, I think that, you know, I want to echo a lot of the comments that have been stated so far. My general thought process is trying to figure out whether or not a generator is needed in the first place. And I'm entirely convinced that it is. This is a very reasonable use case for which we would, you know, require backup power. The two considerations that I'm going through right now is first, the location, and then to what extent a generator would be required. And so the, kind of the two things that I'm thinking through my head right now is, when it comes to the actual location and looking at the site map, the current proposed location is significantly closer to properties on Waverly Street than it is to anywhere else nearby. And kind of through the train of thought that we explored earlier, getting rid of more parking spaces doesn't seem existential. And so when looking at page A14 of the staff report, I'm looking at the parking spots that would be in, adjacent to the property, that wouldn't have more trenching, that wouldn't have other tree issues, that wouldn't require more kinks in the cabling, but would be further away from Waverly and closer to the center of the parking lot. It might screw up the flow to some extent, and it would kind of divide the parking lot a little bit, but at least it would kind of center the, the generator and get it essentially to the midpoint of the property to whatever extent possible, which would eliminate any immediate proximity concerns with any of the Waverly residents. So my first kind of question, and maybe after I'm done talking, the applicant can kind of let me know whether or not the parking spots of 63, 4, and 5 could house the generator would be an interesting topic of conversation. And then just the second thing I wanted to bring up is, is while it sounds like a full generator of this size is required for the just-in-case, and it sounds like solar and battery backup wouldn't be sufficient in and of themselves, I think it would be great if maybe separate from this conversation, you explored having solar and even a smaller battery backup, so that every time the power goes out for 10 seconds, you don't have to spin up the whole generator. And even if it's for, you know, the 20 kilowatt hour capacity of a short power outage, something that goes on and off, you have an immediate backup that is clean, that's not requiring, you know, a massive 200-kilowatt batter, diesel engine spinning up every time, which from a sound perspective and from an emissions perspective, can be rather disruptive. So those are my, like, two general thoughts on this. But I don't think either of them are, would arise to the point of declining this permit application. So I guess my explicit question is, is there any reason why we would not be able to locate the generator on spot, parking spots labeled 64 through 66, or however many spots it would take?
Is there any way you can pull that up on the screen so we can see exactly which spots you're talking about?
It's before you get to the handicapped parking spots. Mr. Pruder, can you put that up?
Chair, I'll put it up right now. Sorry. And so the two pages I'm looking at are A5 and A14. A14 here shows the parking spot map, to whatever extent you guys can see that from down there. And then A5 is page 35 of the overall agenda, which has the overall site map and just highlighting how the current proposal is significantly skewed towards one portion of the lot as opposed to in the midpoint.
So through the chair, while the applicant prepares their response, I do want to identify at this moment, since we're talking about a parking reduction, that the, the city does have a minimum parking requirement for this zoning district that cannot be reduced below without a specific use-based request that requires additional review by staff. If the commission's inclined to go that way, we could not act upon that reduction this evening because that was not part of the notice. But this location in the C1 district, I also want to note that it's one for 200, one space for 200 square feet. That's also our recommended parking rate for medical offices. So staff uses that as its initial guide. There certainly can be adjustments. I do want to make that announcement at this moment, since it feels like the appropriate time.
Thank you for that additional detail.
We have, operationally, we have no concerns about moving to 63, 4, and 5, pending the issue of needing to do another process through the city to relocate there and take away the parking.
I'd like to make a comment, if possible. Can you?
We can, we can hear you. Could you please, I think this is one of the additional members of the applicant team who is speaking. If you could just identify yourself, that would be great. We can hear you. Do we, do we know which of the additional members of the applicant team was, was wishing to speak?
Sorry, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please, proceed.
Okay, there you go. Sorry. This is Allison Darrin with E4H. My question, both to Lawrence and to JJ, is based upon positioning it at 63, 64, 65, and possibly 66, do we believe that the number of the run of conduit and the number of kinks would be able to avoid those three trees that are located in front of the building? And would that be an issue?
There is a risk that we would damage the root system to those trees. We would most likely, forgive me, because I haven't drawn this out, but it looks like we might be able to get away with a 45-degree bend and possibly miss them. But that also does run the risk that the roots grow into the conduits. As the, because if I recall correctly, those are very young trees that are going to age. But I think we're planning on encasing the conduits in concrete anyway.
I think the very next page has a actual image of those trees without leaves.
Yes. So, yeah, it would require a lot more coordination, and there is more room for error if we were to relocate there.
Commissioner Herrick.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a comment. I don't particularly like this, that suggestion, looking at the picture with the trees, then we, this structure would be blocking the fenestration of the frontage of the building. And it just, I understand what you're trying to achieve, but I don't honestly think it would do much because the way the sound study looks, it's still going to be very similar in nature to what it is today. And it's been designed, and not only that, we would, they would need to go through a redesign and thus delay further. So I guess, you know, I appreciate the intent of trying to get there, but I think, you know, keeping it, I would like to actually make a motion, if I may be so bold, is to support this motion, support this application per the staff report for the hazardous use materials, what is it? Sorry, I'm scanning through what this is called. Approve the use permit for hazardous materials, diesel fuel for a new permanent energy generator to service an existing commercial office in the C1 Administrative and Professional Restrictive Zoning District, which is at 8 Homewood Place. Is that the right address? Sorry.
So we have a first here from Commissioner Herrick. Commissioner Herrick, does your first include Mr. Pruder's modification to the resolution that would add a testing period of two hours, once per year, in addition to what's currently written in the resolution?
Yes, because it's a federal requirement.
Thank you.
May I ask one more question about the motion before I second it? Is it possible to include in the motion the suggestion that the applicant seemed amenable to of, of moving the time of day of the testing? Okay.
Great idea. Thank you. I would like to accept that friendly amendment and leave it up to the applicant to work with neighbors on the most optimal time for testing on that monthly test.
With that friendly, ah, I can't talk tonight. With that friendly amendment, I would second the motion.
Thank you. We have a first from Commissioner Herrick and a second from Commissioner Berusy. We have a first from Commissioner Farrak and a second from Commissioner Peruzzi. Any further discussion on the most, before we, on the motion and the second, before we proceed? Commissioner Sillen.
Just a quick note to say that I appreciate, I also want to say that I appreciate the, all the documentation report. I think that the noise levels seem fairly mild, especially compared to something like a gas-powered leaf blower or anything like that. Not that, you know, we should be adding more noise like that, but, and I appreciate Commissioner Farrak saying that, yeah, it probably would remain around the same regardless of where the generator goes. And I appreciate knowing that the pollution is seemingly not a concern, because it's going to rise above the windows of the nearby residences, so I would like to support the motion.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yeah, I, Commissioner Farrak, if you are amenable to this, I would prefer to include explicit language around the testing time. Section 2 dot 1 dot B of the, the actual resolution says the proposed generator would only be used during a power outage and once monthly for 30 minutes of testing on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday during daytime hours. If instead of daytime hours, we could just have a no later than 3:00 p.m., that would ensure that kids aren't home from school, and we can just have that concern entirely alleviated.
I'd want to look to the applicant to make, it sounds like that would be an acceptable parameter from a time perspective, so yes, that's fine with me.
Do we need a resecond, or is that sufficient language for staff to incorporate?
Do we have enough, enough clarity on the additions to what is currently documented in the resolution?
Thank you for checking. Just to read that back, the intention here with the current motion on the table is to basically approve, as provided in the staff report, with the modifications to condition 2A that would basically involve the additional clause of one additional two-hour test per year, which I had provided, we'd provided today earlier, and then additionally to, excuse me, to include that the applicant work with the neighbors to conduct testing at the optimal time, sorry, we established the optimal time. Let me start over on that. I apologize. The first item is what I'd recommended earlier in my presentation, and then the other part would be to change the timing in the condition to be from 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., instead of the 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. that was listed. Does that amendment seem to align with what was?
Yeah, and probably consolidating the friendly amendment to just that makes sense, because then you don't have to, like, figure out how to navigate the best time. It's just before 3:00 p.m., 8:30 to 3:00 p.m., Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. Cool. I think we got it.
Thank you. I think we have clarity. Before we call the vote, I'll simply note that because we, that the applicant is appearing to be affirmative and accepting of the time constraints, I think it's fine to leave it in. I think the spirit is that the applicant was going to try and optimize the time anyways, and I do know that schedules change, and so I probably would not have changed the time window and just acknowledged the spirit of finding the best time for the neighborhood, but it appears that it works as is. So I think I, at this point, I will go ahead and call the vote on?
If I may through the chair, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Please.
Just one other detail. So we'd mentioned the two items I failed to also clarify. For amending this condition, there is language that says it would be a test that's conducted on weekdays, and it sounds like there is a desire to have it on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, which is what the applicant has generally volunteered to offer as their dates of testing. Is that also requested in this condition amendment, that we would want Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to be the days, instead of weekdays, which would be likely Monday through Friday?
I was just reading the draft resolution in the staff report itself.
Yeah. I didn't, yeah, and it was purely because it was already there, so I assumed there was a reason.
That's on page?
A3.
A3, or page 33 of the agenda packet?
Yeah, so the, the condition provides the kind of parameters. I think what the commission is referencing here are part of the findings, which do identify the applicant's proposal, so kind of the expected timing and durations, whereas the condition kind of sets that kind of, you know, outer limits. So if the commission would like to modify the condition to identify in the findings the applicant's, as Mr. Pruder mentioned, kind of proposal, without that added flexibility, that's certainly within the parameters of the commission this evening. So the motion can include an amendment or modification to the recommended condition 2A to identify specific days, Tuesday through Thursday, versus weekdays, as staff identify in the condition.
I'm personally weekday agnostic.
If I may, we are approaching a Fourth of July holiday, and probably the best day of the week that would disturb the fewest number of people might not be the middle of the week holiday. And so I suspect that there are a number of times over the course of a calendar year where the least disturbing time might not be a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It might be for some, you know, event or holiday reason, a Monday or a Friday. And so I think the spirit appears to be both in the written evidence and the presence here today, that the applicant wants to find the least disturbing time for the neighborhood. So if Commissioner Farrak is open to it, I suggest that we leave it as weekday.
If it says weekday, right here, right now, it currently says Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so we can strike that and put weekday. I'm, I agree, we want it to be the most flexible and amenable between the business and the neighborhood, so it's whatever the most reasonable, generous, flexible language is, I'd be supportive of that.
Just to clarify, so the findings and the condition don't necessarily need to track word for word, and so staff would regulate through the conditions, which do identify weekdays, so we'll change it to 8:30 to 3:00 weekdays.
Perfect.
If the commission would like, we're happy to change the findings to mention weekdays, but we don't think it's necessary.
I'll leave that to you. Then let's say weekdays, and you can decide how specific you want all the pieces.
Just want to clarify, I think the conditions are on page 78 of the agenda, A48, so it's in a different part of the staff report, and they do say weekdays.
Thank you. All right. And so with that, I will go ahead and call a vote on the motion by Commissioner Farrak, seconded by Commissioner Peruzzi. Commissioner Peruzzi, yes. Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is six yeses, and no dissent with one absence. Thank you so much for being here today, for engaging. We wish you the best of luck. Which brings us to the end of our, the public hearing portion of our meeting this evening. We are now at G informational items. Mr. Prada, are there any updates on upcoming planning commission meetings and agenda, or any other informational items?
Yes, thank you. So the next meeting will be July 8th. There is one item scheduled for that agenda. It is the proposed reconstruction of the Chevron Service Station, fueling station at 1399 Willa Road. That's the corner of Hamilton Avenue and Willa Road. The proposal is part of the broader Willa Village project, but a separate item and separate action to enable the realignment of Hamilton Avenue as part of the Willa Village project. So that's coming forward on July 8th. It is a use permit, artificial control. And then, as I mentioned at the top of the meeting, on July 22nd, the planning commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the draft GIR for the Parkline Master Plan project, as well as a study session on that project. And that concludes my updates. Happy to answer any general questions on those two future meeting dates.
Commissioner Sillen, general questions on one of those two meeting dates.
Yeah, sorry, just to clarify, on July 8th, are we also reviewing the item that was continued from today for Marmona Drive?
No good question, we are not. We continue that to a date uncertain, to allow staff to work with the applicant on potential ways to identify or to address the compliance issues, and that may involve changing the words in the notice. So we're not prepared to notice to a date certain this evening.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Doe.
Just wanted to let you know, Mr. Prada and other commissioners, that I will be unable to attend July 8th.
Thank you. Yes, I've heard from a number of commissioners. I think I have all the availabilities for July 8th and July 22nd up to date, but certainly if a commissioner has not emailed me, now would be a time. Commissioner Farrak, you can just let me know now.
20 seconds. I'm, I'm out.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Vice Chair Eric Wilch, will lead the July 8th meeting, as I will also be absent. He has been updated, warned. Commissioner Sillen.
I believe I already let you know that I'd be gone on July 8th, Mr. Prada, but if I didn't, here I am.
Yes, so with that, please no other commissioners be unavailable for July 8th, because that will put us just at a quorum. We have five currently committed to July 22nd with Commissioner Farrak's update, so if commissioners can let me know as soon as possible, that would be very important. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Prada. May I ask a favor? This seems, feels like a good time to remind folks about the guidelines around remote attendance. Could you just remind us how to think about that, and when it is appropriate, and how to sort of?
Yeah, certainly. Thanks. I can definitely do it really quick. We'll probably follow up with a email, since this is starting to veer off of agendaized topics, but I can appreciate the benefit of it. There are multiple different ways, so the kind of traditional Brown Act way of participating remotely is to participate from a remote location, identify that location on the agenda, post a notice at that location as well, that you're, that there is a attendee participating from that location, and members of the community can also join. I would need to confirm this. I do not believe that participation would count towards a quorum. There are a number of other ways to participate remotely that have come out of the COVID-19 pandemic, and so there are certain kind of emergency participations that are allowed. Once again, there are nuances around whether or not those participating remotely due to kind of the allowances under, under the order for, or the law regarding remote participation outside the Brown Act. Some count towards the quorum, and some do not. So with that, it's best to be in person, because that's, that's how we ensure we have a quorum. I'm happy to send an email update on that. We have sent one in the past. I know we have a number of new commissioners, so we can certainly do a reminder on ways to participate remotely.
Thank you. I appreciate the reminder. I know that it is written in men, at least one, if not multiple places. I just didn't have it on quick recall, so I appreciate the reminder. And with that, unless there are any other questions around the informational items, seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:25.